Good evening. Six thirty, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M. I called the Selective Regular Business Meeting to order. If you are able, please join standing in for the pledge.
The United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being broadcast live on T C T V, Kaden Station Eight, and on their YouTube web platform. A recording will be available on T C T V YouTube channel at the conclusion of the meeting. Is anyone else recording this meeting tonight? If you have a cellphone, please silence it now. Thank you. First item on the agenda, approval of our prior regular meeting minutes of nine eight twenty twenty five and nine nine twenty five.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes for nine eight twenty twenty five and nine nine twenty twenty five as presented.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote? Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The second item we have, our executive session minutes for nine ten twenty five.
Mr. Chair, I move to, um, to, uh, to, uh, not to release at this time.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on motion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote, Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next item, our executive session minutes for three twenty six twenty five, four nine twenty five, four twenty three twenty five, five twenty eight twenty six, six eleven twenty five, six twenty five twenty five, seven nine twenty five.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve executive session minutes of the meetings on three twenty six, four nine, four twenty three, five twenty eight, six eleven, and seven nine twenty twenty five as presented and to be released to the public.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second it. On the motion? Any discussion? On the motion, how would you vote, Ms. Graves?
I have staying because I wasn't in many of those meetings.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I go, yes. The motion passes. Do want to stand? Next item, anyone for citizen input? Next item is new business. About a month ago or so, back in August, the town hired a new town accountant, Amber Dupell. She is here. She has, uh, she had, has not previously been for the board to be officially appointed. She, uh, she is an experienced municipal accountant. She comes from previously the town of Orange. And she's been, uh, working hard to catch up. There's a lot of things to do in there. So to appoint, uh, Amber Dupell for a term uh, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. I would entertain a motion to appoint Amber Dupell for the position of the town accountant for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. How would you vote, Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You are officially town accountant for the town of Templeton, good or bad.
Welcome.
If you have to get some air.
The Assistant Town Accountant is here and, uh, back to work. Thanks so much for, uh, for throwing your hat in the ring and taking the job on and I hope, uh, you enjoy it and perhaps we'll, uh, get a town administrator so things can get a little less unchaotic here.
Mrs. Chair, I just wanted to say that in the short time Amber's been here, I've been, I've been impressed. I think she's, she's a good, she's a good one. So congratulations. You're welcome. Does she, does she want to say anything? Do you want to say? Mr. Chair, is it okay if she says something to introduce herself like a little bit herself here?
Boy, now I feel like I'm on the spot.
That's okay.
Um, yeah, I came from Orange. Prior to that, I had private accounting experience and I've quickly discovered no two towns are the same and we all do things a little differently, but I definitely think having that experience and also having experience with Vadar will be very beneficial. And I look forward to learning a lot.
Excellent.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. He's flying in the hallway still. You want me to check? It's still waiting for somebody.
All right, then, uh.
It's only seven.
He's waiting on his, uh.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Castle?
Oh, sure.
We will, uh, we'll move by item C and go to item D, T C T V Digital Equity Grant.
Good evening, folks. How are you? So I'm up here. I believe in a packet I sent you of a letter and, uh, digital equity contract and some emails that were sent last minute before, um, some personnel left to change the signatory from the interim town administrator to the select board chair and contact the principal contract for the grant application from the former grant coordinator to myself. And, um, that last item is on page nine of the contract. Um, there's some issues with this. First of all, it's a reimbursable grant. The term is September thirtieth to September thirtieth, which would overlap fiscal years. I did speak with M B I about this. They said we could get the grant done early if we could. I don't know if that's possible. We're doing this for the first time. So, um, we are going to need probably a couple of media assistants and we're two people short. They are on our budget um, to execute on this. So I would like to be able to hire those or put an ad out um, as soon as possible to get that done. Um, we thought that there would be other issues with this with the purchase of capital equipment for this grant since the light department is paying for our capital costs through a pilot program. However, I spoke with Amber uh, the other day and she said for a grant like this, she would set up a reimbursable account in Vadar. And that can run in a negative balance until it's reimbursed. So that would help at least with the capital costs and then we wouldn't have to. You know, John Driscoll at the light department said, yeah, we could purchase your capital items for this and get reimbursed if we can get reimbursed, but if we can purchase it out of a reimbursable grant account, that would save them the trouble of doing that. And, uh, the only trouble for us with a reimbursable account would be logging all the hours for labor because it's about forty three thousand dollars worth of labor there. But Amber said too, if, you know, we run into problems with that, things can be reassigned. So it would be tricky for me when I put in my time sheets and the staff, when they put in their time sheets to, you know, we can keep track of all the hours and we're going to have to parse them out anyways. Um, and maybe we can instruct accounting so many hours for this person is here, so many there. If we can bring the part timers in, most of, we can assign them to this project almost exclusively and that would help as well. So I think, uh, with, if Amber's, Amber said as soon as she gets the contract signed, um, she can start a reimbursable account for that. So if that's okay with the board, I think that would be helpful to execute the grant. And the only other thing, oh, um, at the bottom of the first sheet on the letter, you can see a breakdown. So we're going to buy about twenty one thousand dollars in capital and material costs. That will probably be bought early on. And we can prorate the rest of the stuff over F Y twenty six, three quarters and F Y twenty six and one quarter and F Y twenty seven, since the grant goes up to September thirtieth. However, that's going to put us in, um, as far as the, the total T C T V budget. We're still about twenty two thousand short on the personnel because right now we're fifty three thousand short on the personnel. Um, so about thirty thousand is going to be going to other things in there and about forty, forty to forty three thousand can go to the personnel. So about twenty two thousand dollars is what we should have left for retained earnings after F Y twenty five from my calculations. And that's on the B V As that Jared sent out. I know the last B V A he sent out in June did not include last payroll, but I do know what he was looking at for payroll for my department because we were going to go over, if not for a just, uh, reassignment from the accounting. It was an accounting mistake in our personnel and that could be reassigned to another sheet, which helped out, but because he knew how much we were over, I could deduce how much the personnel was. And my estimate before we get a final B V A is about twenty two thousand. So if we can go to Fall Town Meeting and secure those funds for F Y twenty six instead of waiting for the retained earnings to be available for F Y twenty seven, that would help us out greatly in our budget in order to do this. I don't think we're going to need fifty thousand in free cash if we can use a reimbursable account as Amber suggests. And I don't want to ask you for that anyways because we're already asked for enough. And so I would ask if you want to approve the contract and have the chair sign it. And if we can hire two part-time people that we're short on right now, that is in our budget. There are only ten hours a week. That would be greatly helpful. And if we could get a town meeting um, article for what's available in retained earnings, that would help us out this year as well. And I think we can make the budget.
I see a lot of juggling in this. Um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, you know, what benefit is to us, to town. Um, you know, there's twenty one thousand dollars in capital items, which is for.
One of the things we're going to be doing, and I guess I share sorry with this, is improving the Wi-Fi here. The library, they want better range for outside. The senior center has dead spots in it. They need more robust Wi-Fi. So those are specified in the budget. There's about fourteen thousand dollars worth of that gear and computers for the senior center and the library as well as fifty six hundred dollars at the bottom of the, uh, letter. You see, for marketing and outreach, that's my mistake. That's actually for equipment such as hotspots and Chromebooks that the state would like us to make available to people who need broadband. So that's under a device distribution part of the grant. So we would have to pay, uh, buy that hardware and then get reimbursed. And the rest is, is our labor and a lot of it's going to be for digital literacy. Um, I know the senior center wants to have, or the senior services would like to have regular sessions with people who know how seniors can operate their phones or their computers better. And we have some of those people that we can send over there and, and do that. We also intend on making digital literacy videos, which I hope the state would like because they're looking for things that are recyclable or last longer than a year. So a video on digital literacy stuff could last out. And we even have, uh, Magnus Carburg at Ratuset Business Incubator, who we work with, uh, said that he would, uh, help them out with if they want to learn how to use Chat G P T. He's advisor of that and how to use that responsibly and the different things that they can use it for. So, you know, the state wants everyone to have broadband digital access and some of the hardware like the hotspots and the Chromebooks and things like that. I have no idea how this is going to go, Bob. It's the first time for everybody. So, you know, we're only looking to buy a few of these items to loan out and to give people. And we're going to have to devise a program for that as well. But a lot of ours is, is tied up into the labor for video production and digital literacy for people. And we're going to have to come up with a program. So we'll probably spend the first couple of months looking at the hardware, trying to bring that in as early as possible so that we can install it. We don't know if we're going to run into problems with the I T vendor over it. I was told by the last, uh, by the intern T A that it shouldn't be an issue, but we're touching their stuff, you know, so they'll, they'll need to know about it at least. And get all that stuff secure. I, I certainly don't want to save the hardware for the last quarter or so, you know, because it's involved.
Now, I, I missed part of your presentation. Sorry for that. Um, I did read your, your paper that you sent in and, um, this seems like a wash, pretty much, that what we need to expend for this is exactly what we got coming in. So it doesn't seem to help your budget really in the least.
Only in theory.
Yeah, and.
And that's why I've said before on this, this is like getting, we have a seventy thousand dollar client called the state of Massachusetts, basically, and this is what they want.
Yeah.
And they're not going to make any profit on it because even if we, let's say twenty thousand in hardware and we say, well, we got it done for fifteen, we're not going to get twenty. We're going to get fifteen.
Right. That's why it, it just, it kind of seems like more work. Um, and you're still potentially shut down in April or March. Right? March or April, May?
Eventually, yeah.
You know, I'm just saying that, you know, the budget, so.
Yeah, we're fifty three short.
Yeah. Yeah.
This helps us on paper. Maybe. Fifty thousand in free cash will go a long way. I don't know if you have it or you want to do that. And I'm trying to make it as palatable as possible for everybody.
I'm just trying to figure out if it's just more scrambling to stay in place um, for you and.
I do feel like I'm scrambling. I feel like I'm hopping from melting ice flow to melting ice flow just to stay alive. And the goal is over there, you know? But what can you do? You know, maybe this year we're a digital equity shop and maybe next year we're a digital signage shop for a few years. I don't know. I'm trying to find ways just to bring money and to make it work. And a lot of my job will be tied into this. I'm willing to give it a try and to see how it works and maybe we can make an impression on the state to get more money. But I have to say, this rollout of the digital equity has been rocky and, um, like I said, everyone's, everyone's still first day on the job with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, I don't know when you came in exactly. I can't remember, but what I was explaining to them is some of the concerns I have may be maybe eliminated because Amber said she could set up a reimbursable account that we can pull everything from. We won't have to ask the light department to purchase the hardware for us and get reimbursed. It'll just be a matter of how we parse out the, the hours for the person. But it seems like we're going to have to fill out endless forms for, and ask for our band anyway. So we'll have to keep close tabs on it.
So that reimbursable account would draw a deficit for.
Yeah, and she, she said you can draw, you can have a negative balance until it's reimbursed. I was more concerned of it all taking, coming out of our account and then having deficits spent by the end of the year before it was reimbursed. You know, but that would solve numerous problems.
Yeah. Well, no, I, I just came in right at the end of that and, uh, you know, that does change things a bit because then you don't have to have, you know, free cash upfront or, you know, other monies upfront available to reimburse.
If it weren't reimbursed, I'd be asking for the fifty thousand and thirty thousand here, but since she, if she can set up a reimbursable account, it'll work on paper. I'll try to make it work in real life.
Where's that? All right. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Just as a note, uh, on the, uh, running a negative balance on the reimbursement thing, that would be similar to the chapter ninety grant processes. You get a chunk of money and you spend it and it shows negative until the state reimburses you. So just, you know, people don't think.
And these will be reimbursed at the end of six in twelve months, but we can get it done early. And I don't know, you know, I, I can't promise you we'll get it. I'd love to get it done in May and be done with it and get everything in F Y twenty six. I don't know, you know, and we're certainly going to need two part timers ever short to do it. Without that, forget it.
And that over the two years will lead up that twenty two.
Yep.
Change complete. Yeah. Even me.
I hope the last three months after the fiscal year ends, we're, you know, either done with it or coasting.
Be an interesting experience. Ms. Graves?
And you can't use any kind of interns to help with the cost, like, you know, with the worker?
I, I will use as much intern power as I can get my hands on. We have two, uh, excellent, we've had two excellent high school interns and, uh, they'd be in line for the part-time positions. And I'm hoping to get more, but you know, interns, we haven't seen them in weeks. So sometimes, you know, you can't rely on having somebody do something if they're not going to be around. And that's the, that's the drawback with interns. Yeah, I'll, I'll use the internal power I can find. We'll get it done.
Yeah, I just had one other question. Um, last year in capital, we kind of had an indication this was coming, but we hadn't really projected. Now we're looking to make some purchases of equipment that really wasn't in my mind planned on, but, uh, I understand this is a moving target, another unfunded state mandate, but times are tough right now. And, uh, I, I will carte blanche make a statement. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the entire board, but for all the department heads, please stop looking at free cash as a piggy bank. That's not what it's there for. I understand that we, the funds are some activated, some already pre-committed, some already, uh, embargoed, so we have, need to pay attention to what's going on. I, it, sure, pie in the sky, wave the magic wand, we do it, but it's not there. So I'm looking real hard at this.
Yep.
So, um, first thing first, um, we have on the agenda tonight, the to, uh, close the Fall Town Meeting warrant. Uh, it's a draft. It's the will of the board when we get to that agenda, uh, but we can put a placeholder article on there, uh, pending the verbiage of what you're asking for. And I will, I will reverberate what Mr., I will repeat what Mr. Toth just said about free cash. All the department heads can be aware that this board is, has its sights set on, and we've already discussed this, uh, and I, I, I see it happening that, uh, the piggy bank, so to speak, and, and the, the free throw for free cash is, is going to get tightened up because we have things to do for the residents and the capital improvement committee, they, we really don't have the budget. What they do, it's the capital uh, stabilization fund, but for not putting any money in there, you don't really have much of a budget. And, and that should come from free cash because free cash is one-time money. You pay a one-time bill with it. It can't depend on it because it goes up and down. And the trajectory, uh, history of free cash, yes, there's a bump coming up, but down generally, but it's on the downhill. It's, it was way up here and it's, it's coming down and it bumps up and down a little bit, but it's a long time ago. The D O R has said this in our. Long time ago, the the D O R has said this in our financial review, you keep using free cash to fund your general fund budget, you're gonna keep having problems. That said, I understand. Maybe it's. Putting, we're putting a lot of faith in the grant, um. And it is a good one, and I know. Uh, at least from what I've read, uh, it's, this isn't the end, this is a thing sort of like. Green community stuff, they just, it's keeps evolving. But there is also the state leash, as you stated that uh. You know, yeah, there's twenty for this and fifty for that and thirty for that and a hundred for that. Uh, but if you don't spend this, they're not gonna give you the extra cake there.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, looking at the state right now. With the the governor looking, you know, extended N I C authority, uh. Tax revenue, I believe one place, yeah, it's up over here, it's down, uh. School funding stuff, uh, that uh chapter ninety stuff is funding, it's all state aid, it's. I can go at any time, it's the way the state runs, it's uh. So. We you hope it's there and you. It will come, but uh, again, just like free cash. It can go down and then. Even if you get it back the next year, that loss. You're not back to even the next year, it takes a while. So. I I looked at the grant and like any kids. And this is really not about the grant, just a general statement about T C T V budgeting and and where money is coming from. It's uh. It's not a real clear path right now, it's. It it's almost like uh you've got six credit cards and paychecks and it goes high and you're gonna put it on this one and then take this one, and that's just the way that it looks. You know, it's uh, heated up and then getting close to the cliff point, trying to push ourselves back. And in in this endeavor, and it's, you know, the cable, TV and, you know, where that's going. Uh, and that's where a lot of the revenue originally came from. Streaming services I saw today are going up, so, you know, people start pulling back on that, and that affects. The the way that it's set up right now, which is another story for another day, but. There's no more questions. From the board. And you're asking for uh, and the and the document is asking for the clerk to sign, and I understand that, but uh. In the suggested motion, it says for the clerk to sign because. Our select board operating. Policy procedures say that documents requiring a official documents requiring a single signature. Is the responsibility of the clerk. This board can, you you can, they can vote to have the the chair sign, um, being that we don't have. Uh, a town administrator right now. So. I will leave this to the board, but by the end of paying a motion. To approve the grant. The T C T V digital equity grant.
So, moment.
Second. And that with this.
For who to sign, clerk or the chair?
I'll go with the chair, but. You did it first.
All right, well, I'll go with the clerk, because that's the way it's suggested.
Okay, Clark, yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second. To approve the equity grant and for the clerk to sign. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
Yes.
And I rule yes. And. You get the swim for another day.
Thank you all.
You get it.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. We'll make it work and it will be efficient.
Mr. Kazban. Present a report for R S D. New construction.
We guys have coffees printed out.
Thank you, though.
Uh, good evening. In terms of introductions, John Cutler from S M N A, I know you know Amber Ray. Of course, and um, this is Keith Parker, um, so he's director as well, and so um. Before us, uh, you know, we, as I've communicated through several emails. Um. We entered into the M S B A, um. Oh, it's usually the green repair, but the accelerated repair uh program, um, to see if we'd be accepted into, uh, because our roof. Um, many sections of the roof um are just, are just not in good shape past life, so as um. In a way of some introduction or just uh some history, two thousand and fourteen. Um, we, uh, the different company come in and evaluate the entire roof. Um, it, you know, it certainly there were issues um in that evaluation. Uh, the, some fixes were made, but really patchwork, so to speak, on the roof, so nothing, nothing drastic. So we've, we've, we've been chasing, you know, uh, typical. Um, failing roof type things, you know, leaking here, some flashing issues in which um. Don't go into great detail about. So when moratorium was up on the accelerated repair, we applied for it. Um, they came out in August of last year, the M S B A, they walked the roof. Keith, um, and found that a roof, um, or at least. Sections of the roof certainly met the criteria to be um candidates for the um, for the accelerated prayer repair program. We then entered into uh the phase in which um S M A and company came out to actually evaluate the roof. Which we'll go into here. Um, and so that's where we're at, um. Really, I I'm gonna turn it over to either Keith um or to John, because they are the experts in terms of what is, what is up with the roof. And the criteria in which um was used um to evaluate it, so.
Uh, well, good evening and good evening. Thank you all for having us here, um. Um, really, we've got five major issues. Got leaking in thirty-five locations in the building. Um, now. That's one of the issues. I think the symptom of that issue is. Roof wall flashing, you've got multiple elevations on that roofing system. Um, the way the the flashing was installed, it's literally pushing water back into the roof assembly. And that's why you've got moisture buildup on the there, so you're getting insulation failure. On top of the fact that your insulation doesn't meet stretch code anymore.
Just for clarity sake, the 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 roof section they're talking about is the flattened rubber roof.
No, so I I apologize, I should have started there. So this, so this project. Uh, actually, I'm gonna back up even a a step further from there. So our partner is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, they'll be reimbursing. A good chunk of this project. Um, they do have an age limit um on what they will repair, so. We're doing the entire high school metal, metal seam roofing in the T B C O there. Uh, whole thing's being, being replaced. Um, that's about seventy thousand square feet. We can only do about seventeen thousand square feet on the middle school side. And no one on the school side was actually in the district at the time, but my guess is you had a two thousand eleven. Um, partial roof replacement on the middle school side. And I'm guessing that's what instigated the twenty-fourteen um roof investigation. Because it does look like that flashing continued to be an issue, and I'm guessing that's. You you've spent money, replaced a roof, and then turned around and said, why do we, why do we still have leaking close to those areas in the middle school? And I think it's that elevation change, so. Um, that's kind of the the main issue and the symptom. Catastrophic issue that come from that is you've got rusting on some of the, on some of the beams and columns, um. No damage right now to the spread footings that we saw out there, but you have a gypsum deck. And there's a couple areas on the middle school side where they're, where they're recommending reinforcing that with a metal deck. So, we're not at a catastrophic point, I'm not gonna sit here and say you gotta do this, you gotta spend money, um. But you will at some point, and right now you have the M S B A standing behind you, who's gonna pay. Somewhere in the ballpark of fifty-nine percent of this project. Um. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try not to go into too much detail. If you guys have questions. Welcome to ask them more, feel free to reach out to us after the fact, um, and we, we will, or you already have, um, the existing conditions narrative from. From our design team, um, but basically current structures, some, um. You know, some issues on the facade, you've got some pretty significant cracking that we recommend repairing. Few areas you need to reinforce the decking, um, straight back the rust in uh on some of the columns and beams that we're seeing significant damage to. Um, remove the entire roofing assembly pretty much down to that gypsum. Um, and then bring it back, bring it back up, um, with the appropriate amount of insulation, um, to meet stretch code, because obviously this building was. Either done in fifty-six or ninety-eight or or two thousand eleven, so those older. Older age roofs are are no longer up to current energy codes, um, so if we're touching it, we have to bring it up to code. Um, and then you've got, as a result of the failing insulation, you, I'm sure some of you may have seen pictures, at the very least, you've got ponding or still water. Over forty-eight hours after rainfall, goes against A S T M standards, but that is again a result of you got insulation failing under the. Yo, and it's starting to cave in in those areas, um. There's only one section right now that we think we're gonna need to add a drainage pipe, um. Most, most of the issues, like I said, are not, are not a layout concern, um, or an M E P concern, it's just the failure of the insulation, um. So, we went out and got an estimate for everything I just discussed, um. That estimate came back at about eight million dollars, give or take. Um, that includes escalation, um, can hit design contingencies, because we're anticipating this work would be a summer slammer. Next summer, that is the, at least how the A R P projects were designed. I see no reason. Um, from past projects I've done in the A R P program, wouldn't be able to get it done in the summer slammer. Um, and then you have your soft costs, our design team, my team, contingency to carry for the project itself. Um, and then there, the one catch here is the M S B A. Through the A R P program is now requiring solar ready. Now that does not mean they're requiring us to purchase solar panels. But we need, you need to have the ability to do so down the road, so there is some additional cost there, um. Your neighbors next door asked, well, why would we do it then if they're gonna make us buy something? At the end of the day, you're gonna spend somewhere in the ballpark of one point six to three million dollars in solar ready. That eight million dollars, you're getting sixty percent back on, you still come out ahead, well ahead, that is. I understand some, some of the hesitancy to install something you might not want, but it will. You know, it is available to you down the road to actually get some money back if you chose to add the panels to it. Um, and again, what they're reimbursing still offsets what they're making you install. Um, as part of, as part of this partnership. So the to, the the grand total, um, I would need to ask for on the warrant would be twelve million eight hundred eighty-six thousand. One hundred and eighty-one. So in late August, we submitted. Our schematic, does our schematic package, which include the existing conditions narrative, we gave you drawing specifications. Um, our thirty-eleven budget, which was derived from the estimate that we, um, that we had. On, I think it's, it's October twenty-ninth?
October twenty-nine.
October twenty-ninth, the M S B A is gonna have a board meeting to decide to move us forward. Um, into the next phase of the project. Or to, or they'll respond and say, hey, I need you to clean up these things, but we have been working with them, um, which is why they give such. Such a a significant duration between submission and decision, um, because they gave us some feedback, we've been going back and forth with them, my team, the design team. Uh, but at that point, we have a hundred and twenty days. From their decision to execute the project funding agreement, which they will send to us. So right now we have a reimbursement certificate at fifty-nine percent, that gets finalized at. The project funding agreement, it could go up a little, could go down a little, it's not gonna be dramatic. Fifty-nine percent, I don't imagine a swing, sitting more than ten either way, um, and we rarely even see a swing, to be honest, so. That's the ballpark you're in, um, you'll be on the hook for about forty percent. Uh, you do need to borrow the total amount of the project. Uh, and it's then, they have, the M S B has a pro pay system, we'll manage that on behalf of of the district. Um, where once we hit fifty thousand dollars in a month or in multiple months, we can then submit those invoices to them, and they'll send you a check back. But more or less, we need to borrow everything and then pay, bring it back, pay, bring it back, uh. Trying to think if I have anything. I think that pretty much covers it. You guys have any questions?
So you're saying at the end of the day, we'll be responsible for roughly four point eight million dollars of the twelve point one?
Been done the exact math out?
Yeah, yeah, just the ballpark. Yeah.
That that sounds good.
If you won't mind, ta- talk about the uh, one of the questions was asked, what do you think the tariffs will do to the project, right, and so. Or potential tariffs, etc., but you can see. Whatever's.
Right.
So, I I built into this five percent um construction contingency, which is what the M S B A will reimburse at. If they find your contingency usage to be reimbursable, um, and that's what they're evaluating right now, when they're looking at this full project. I recommended two percent um for owners, and they'll only reimburse point five. I always recommend at least two percent, and if nothing else on a project like this, where we really won't see. You know, designer or increased cost for my firm, just by the nature of how quick these projects are, I look at it more as a big contingency. Um, but within this estimate, we built in. I think it was ten percent um for design contingency, and then another ten or five for escalation. Which is really, really high, that that's carrying a lot of float. Um, for a project that you intend to, that we intend to be bidding out in February. So I think that more than covers some of the market insecurities right now with, with tariffs and volatility in materials, um. And honestly, it it's just my opinion. I I think we're gonna see a lower number because, one, because of when we're bidding, you wanna get the companies early in the year so they can plan out their, you know, their workflow for the entire year. So you get better prices and more engagement. Um, and two, just, I I think that's not, and what we're carrying right now for effectively general requirements built in blow is. High, but I'd rather be conservative for what we're asking for, it's, everyone's always happy to turn around and give the taxpayers money back.
Kevin, question? So on the. Twelve million eight eighty-six, is that Templeton share or is that the full cost?
That is the entire cost. That's ever, that is the whole cost of the project, so then, six, you know, let's say sixty percent of that's gonna get eaten by the M S B A, and then I think. What do you guys have eighty-five, fifteen split? Okay, okay.
So. And I just wanna be clear, because um. Just like when we go to elementary school. Uh, it's sixty percent of. Will be reimbursed of eligible.
Correct.
Correct, so it's not. It's not definitely sixty percent of twelve million eight eighty-six, because you send, you send a hundred thousand in there and they say, well. Only sixty thousand that's reimbursable, six, fifty-nine percent of that one.
Correct, um, what I, what I will say. I, I don't see much that we've included in this project that they would consider non-reimbursable, um. There is one item that we've gone back and forth on that could bring this down. By at least seven figures, but until I have confirmation on that, I'm going with the number um that we know for now.
I just want the people watching to to understand that, that it's. It's not necessarily sixty percent or fifty-nine percent of the twelve eighty-six, it's, it goes to M S B A and.
Right, right, yep.
The bean kind of say, yep, yes, 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 and no.
Now, what I will say is. The voters would still be making an informed decision by the time of the ballot itself, because once we have that project funding agreement. On October twenty-ninth, we'll know exactly what they're willing to reimburse, and then we can also evaluate what we're borrowing, if they say. Or whatever we'd like, hey, we don't think that that latter is not an A D A issue, you don't really need it, it's convenient, for example. Um, we could theoretically just value engineer it out of the project in its entirety and change the number up. Well, actually, that's a question I should ask you guys, can. The warrant be modified to reduce the number?
It can be done on town meeting. Yes, town meeting can.
Okay.
Up the dollar mouth. Lower it or say heck no, they, that's their option.
Okay.
Another question that was asked is that, um who carries the note, the district, um and maybe you wanna talk about this.
Yeah, I'm not real familiar, cause the old last time we did something like this was when we put the addition on in the late nineties. But I'm pretty sure, like, the district takes out the note and then you would get a capital assessment each year. Just like your regular tra- like transportation assessment and stuff, so it would just be built in to your yearly assessment.
Yes, I, I, M S B A is. The town's borrowing the money, but they go through the district, cause.
Yeah.
They're uh bureaucrats and bean counters and.
Little bit rigid at times.
M S B A do a fine job, you have, you know, sixty-five percent would be better, but. So uh later on, we do have. Our fall town meeting warrant. And I included an article, no, no dollar amount, uh cause I wasn't aware of that. Just so it's there. For a debt exclusion contingent upon. Uh a ballot question, which we would have to have, but to meet your timeframe, I believe we would have to have one before. Your.
Hundred and twenty days from October twenty-ninth.
Our fall town meeting is November twelfth. Um so we have to. Get with the town clerk and figure this out uh. To have a uh, a special election with the ballot question, and then that is when you would know if. The town said yes or no.
Okay, right.
So it is um. And like you said, if uh. If you don't move on it or it's voted down, uh I believe. A couple of these M S B A things, you kind of go to the back of the line. And because there are more and more communities. Going after M S B A and the funding. I know the uh, the millionaires tag and all of that, but this is still a.
Yep.
You have a pile of money. This, we have this many towns going for it, so. Whoever gets.
Yeah.
In line first is given, but. Uh it has to go to the town meeting and it has to go to election, and historically. Debt exclusions have always passed, generally, most of the time, there's. Ninety percent of the time, if they pass that town meeting, and then you go to the ballots where they. If they're gonna sink, that's what they say, sometimes they sink that down. So again, when I got your email about this, I did include a place of the article for the debt exclusion. Uh we can put an amount in there, and if you find out between. October twenty-ninth and, and the twelfth, i- if you. Number went down, to town meeting for just adjust that number of debt.
Yeah, I mean, it's, as soon as we have that P F A, you guys will have it as well and you'll have the exact number. And please let us know if you need anything else from us for town meeting, any information or.
And that's, that's, you know, that's all the board can do since. We vote on the board to include it and then.
Mister Chair, this will also be in what Phillips and does too, cause they have to pay a share.
I believe they were, they've already presented.
They already did, okay.
And they're seeing if it was gonna entertain or. Is what I've understood.
And they have a joint meeting coming up, I, I don't remember exactly when.
October fifteenth, we gotta go back and they're beating us with finance and select board to talk about the specifics.
Like you said, I, when you gave me the email, I had to put the pressure in more, and hopefully uh. Hopefully next week it'll be, you know, with somebody besides me. Be, uh I don't know how you'll feel about it, but it'll be, I'll be very happy.
Sure, Mister Chair, let me. Uh one question, and this is just uh like a memory question, it's something to sell me a little bit more on this. Um I believe I remember back when my son was in school. That the roof on the high school. Was being done. They had gentlemen up there with, you know, the tire or the rubber roof and the whole bit. For a significant period of time.
Original high school, talking or?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And uh. I just was wondering if either one of you knew when that was.
Two thousand and eleven, there was a roof project done. It was more on the middle school side, pieces of the middle school side. And that's why that, because it's not twenty-five years old, it doesn't qualify for any M S B A reimbursement.
When was he in high school, Bob? I could check it if I can.
I was gonna say, he would have just left around two thousand twelve or thirteen, so. He might have been.
That might make sense, yeah, yeah.
He might have been that, so.
They had done several.
Yeah, actually.
He's trying to get an idea of longevity of the.
In two thousand sixteen, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I have that right here.
Yeah, that, that area white is the area that we're fairly confident.
In two thousand sixteen, we had some significant. Um leaving and we, we had a company go up and it was right over the um, right with the high school entrance area. And um again, they, they found that all the flashing was put in, was it backwards or?
Backwards, like the seams on the.
So they're, and they're literally just, yeah. Water, so I mean. You know, they, they, yeah, but certainly didn't do any favors, right, but so. Um and we, we replaced that and the gentleman who was up there at the time said, look, just given how long this has been going on is. And that's why, of course, when the, you know, the A R P opened up again, we wanted them, we wanted their eyes on the roof just to, so we could. You know, figure out what was lost.
And to follow up on that, what would be the anticipated life on the roofing you're putting in?
Thirty-five years, to be honest, a lot of roofing. Material expert, but.
Way out of line with what we had.
I haven't seen gypsum deck since I've been.
When you said that, I was just like, oh. Yeah, so, thank you.
So, um. Anyway, any questions from the board?
I have none, I heard a part of this at the school committee meeting last week, and I believe you presented it Phillips and's select board the night prior, so a week ago tonight.
As I said, I.
Sure.
I put it on the warrant and uh it's a draft and we'll be discussing it later.
Your mark is your work, let it go, right? Go for everybody and that's how we'll, we'll, we'll move forward, yeah, or, or not, depending, so. Appreciate the time, we appreciate the efforts of S M M A, they've really done a nice job giving us. We now know exactly what's wrong with the roof, like it might just kind of bits and pieces, so um, yeah, so we're, we're hoping to move forward, but we get it.
It'd be nice to get rid of those thirty-five leaks.
Be nice.
We'll do it next year and a couple of years, it'll be twenty by women's.
Hopefully not.
They not learn that when they build the high schools.
That's the only way it goes.
That's what happens over town with the high schools.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I get your name?
Yes.
I knew you wanted better.
There was some question about this and. Uh at the.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
At the same night as a regular business meeting. And. I was not on the board in twenty-three at the last. Dog hearing two years ago, but Mr. Pope was and I watched the videos and. It was like a, a suggestion or discussion, like maybe. When you have a dog hearing, uh which can get long and emotional and. It was, it was talked about, but there really wasn't a consensus or a. A thing to put it in uh. The select board operating procedures so that. When a dog, and they don't come often, but uh when you do. Uh to have the dog hearing, uh per, it, it put in our policy would be on a, a special. Separate item called meeting. And I was um. Just looking for the, the consensus of the board. Uh if you agree with this, then we could put it on a. A meeting to discuss the policy and actually vote to add it. So I was just wondering the thoughts on the board. Uh when we've, a dog hearing does come up. Uh we would call a, a, a special meeting to have a single agenda item for a dog hearing.
I concur.
Let's go.
Yeah, I, 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 it's, it's difficult, they could go really long. Um I don't understand why they were on the same day as a regular meeting, they should be separate. Um a hundred percent, I agree. Maybe a hundred and ten percent agree.
Yes, should be a sandalow meeting.
And frankly, so, uh. Yeah. Get him in the select board. Our policy. To uh, to include that. Because they, you know, they go a couple, three hours and then if you have. Even if you try to keep the agendas this small, you, you never know.
Yeah, it's just still emotional.
Next item on the agenda is uh release of lien. I. I forwarded you the email from uh Mr. Peterson in board. From uh. In the Opportunities Group. Who uh has been involved with the community's community development block grant. And. There's a item in there where. They loan money to homeowners and. They have to pay for fifteen years. Uh and if they, you know, sell or leave before then, they have to pay it back. Mr. Sam Lord has this one property. That uh. It's past the fifteen-year plan and all they are really looking forward is uh a vote of the board. Uh there's no involvement money, they don't have to pay anything back, but again, it's reached the fifteen-year maturity. So. And, and uh, Mr. Amber, he's, he would, he didn't really think this needed to come before the board, but yeah, he just, for clarity's sake. I was in agreement and thought that it, it should come in front of the board for a vote. Uh. So it can be reported on the date and as we cleared off the books, again, there's. There's no involvement of any funds here or any money. Uh it's just releasing the lien, the homeowner from the lien according to. Uh the, the agreement and guidelines of the uh neighborhood development. We've done several of these, uh not in the distant past, but uh they do come up every nine months. Any questions on this? Concerns about it, uh I said, it's just a uh, it's really a formality, uh because. The time will pass the timeframe where they would have to pay anything back or, or where we would have to waive it.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I do know that the assessors, they looked it into it and um. And, and double-checked and everything is in order. So. I would like to uh make a motion. To um, where's my motion, uh to, to uh move to approve the lease of lien. The release of the lien on sixteen Walnut Street, Ballinville, Mass, oh one four, oh one three four six.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Oh, one sixty-six, what did I say? Oh, my, my thing said sixteen, I believe, uh it's one sixty-six, correction.
No, it shows sixteen on the document in front of us.
Is it on the, on the, on?
On the property agree.
Yeah, that's what I thought so too.
On the discharge of mortgage, it shows one sixty-six.
It's one, it's, it's, it's sixteen. That's the discussion I have today was on sixteen Walnut Street.
Okay, uh. Two quick, I'll sack it, but I have two quick points, the zip code is incorrect, it should be oh one four three six. Looks like somebody's finger got a little quick on the keyboard. No, even on the original.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of.
I would add for the chair to sign.
I agree with the amendment.
I still have a concern with the prop discharge of the mortgage. Shows one sixty-six Walnut Street is the property address.
On the paperwork, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that like a whiteout thing?
Well, what are you saying, one sixty-six?
On the discharge of mortgage?
That can be changed.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the actual.
Right, that's a sixteen.
Sixteen.
Right, but where he's potentially gonna sign, it says.
So he needs to wipe that out.
Right, we need to correct that.
Yeah.
Before it's signed.
Correct.
Yep, and we need to correct that zip code anyway.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Need a vote.
Yeah, we need a vote, we got, we got a. First and a second and a re- um.
Amendment.
An amendment, yeah.
Any further questions, comments or concerns on the release of the lien? Hearing done, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next item is. Down property use of the lines. Love, mountain patch and. Stixson?
Yeah.
Hi, Darren Wayne Dixon, Telfans and Lions Secretary.
Okay, uh just before we, before we start any discussion, just to clarify this, uh there is a little. Conflict and it's on the government, it's not on you all, uh and we're gonna have a joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission in October. Uh at one of our meetings, we will, if it's show. As Daniel Arch at the forty-five, sixty-five says, states that. These, if the common areas and stuff are defined as parks, which would be the oversight of them, which, and. Uh that is also that, uh they have the same authority. In oversight as aldermen or selectmen do. So there's a little messy thing and, and questions from, from some, uh including myself where. We gotta get this straight, cause it's, it's not on you and I'm not gonna punish the kids or anybody, uh because the government's uh. Not organized well. Uh but in the future, you may be going to the Parks and Rec Commission, depending on, but tonight, uh. We're going to uh, we're gonna consider application.
Okay.
Uh just to let you know.
Sure.
This, this has come up before.
Okay, yeah, just let us know.
And I don't wanna punish the kids, cause we can't hear our stuff again.
Right, yes, so what we're doing is looking to use the gazebo area for the pumpkin patch this year. On October seventh with a rain date of October ninth. Um the kids from Templeton Center Elementary would walk over from. Um, the kids from Templeton Center Elementary would walk over from the school to the gazebo area. Pick a pumpkin, walk back to their classes. Um, we're looking at about approximately five hundred and fifty students and teachers. Um, to come over between the hours of nine thirty and eleven thirty. Um, we would set up around eight o'clock AM and probably be off the common by one.
And this is just the.
The yearly pumpkin event, yeah. Yes, yeah. Right, yeah. So, and I did attach attach the site map of the. The walking area that they'll be coming, so they'll be going down South Road and then they'll head back up Wellington Road. As the next group will be coming down South Road. It actually works out pretty well.
Questions from the board? As we have discussed very briefly.
Another one of the historical events, the line, everybody does such a good job. Yeah, we get so much in return. This this is.
Thank you. The kids.
It's a no-brainer to approve it.
The liability form is in order, so that's good too.
I think it's a great project. I just.
Absolutely.
Have a problem with the the way we've been doing the process. You know.
Well, we also have the um haunted gazebo coming up, so to know where. Go with that because that will be the end of October, so.
Whatever the outcome, I will make sure that we know that.
Thank you.
Yeah, because uh.
Yeah.
But again, this is uh when I was. In school back and way back going to Templeton Center, we'd walk over to the uh Historical Society and tour that building and. Things like that. So there's stuff given from the kids from that school to that area is nothing. There's no concerns. I would entertain a motion to uh approve the Lions Club Pumpkin Patch on uh the town common.
I'll move. I'll make a second. So the the event is on the seventh, rain date on the ninth.
Correct.
Okay, because our our motion is incorrect.
Yeah.
Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Could you come back to me, please? You come back to me, please.
Yes.
I just had to come back.
Miss Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Thel?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I'll abstain.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
The next uh last item under new business is the Mott Transportation Service Contract. This is for, you know, for bus services, uh. There is uh. Reimbursements come from Mott that helps cover the. Operating costs, uh for bus drivers and so forth and the dispatcher and. They bring people to medical appointments, they. It's kind of evolving into more now you can uh. Almost uh like a like a regular bus service. But uh relative to the seniors, that was an important service. Again, they they take seniors on different. Different trips. They can take them to uh. Medical appointments and and so forth. Uh, and there is a reimbursable grant from Mott. Yes.
My only. Issue is that the reimbursement does not go back to the senior center.
It, yes, I it uh. It's some of it is used in the budget, but it's. It it's a messy thing that hopefully we can get rest in the future. It's an important thing and it's a, it was a time-sensitive thing, uh because they have to get it back. This goes through the state and. And again, uh, in the motion, it was for the uh. The clerk to sign because that's what our policy says, but if the board chooses the chair.
Uh, I move to approve the Mott Transportation Service Contract as presented and the clerk to sign.
A second.
I'm ready with a second and. Any further discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Miss Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Thel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's the last item under new business. Under old business is. To close the uh. The fall town meeting warrant, the citizens petitions, uh. There are two citizens petitions on here. Uh, these were. The people that presented them, they originally were going to be on the, were supposed to be on the annual town meeting warrant. Uh, for some reason, wherever the SNAPU was. From the clerk's office to our office, they did not make it. Uh, the question, you know, came up but by the presenters, um. And they were told they promised that they would be on uh the fall town meeting. Again, residents uh shouldn't have to pay. When uh, when we mess up, when their government messes up. And the uh, I sent an email for the town clerk today, uh. But she's off, uh. So there may have been. Sent additional citizens petitions, uh. Admitted to the court that uh I I wasn't aware of. And this is a draft copy, uh. And uh. If the board so wishes, we can. Put a a white folder article uh with TCTV concerning. Transfer funds from their retained earnings. Article seven is the the placeholder for NRSD, uh. Will the the dollar figure that they gave us would be inserted in there. Then there would be a. Article eight will be uh TCTV retained earnings and then. Article nine would be ten, uh. And if any other citizens, which President Moore closed today for citizens petition, so but I don't. I don't have any information if any were turned in. I didn't know that tomorrow, uh. Looking out, we do have uh closed the warrant tonight, uh. First, I would ask if you would be in favor of adding uh. An article for TCTV. For a transfer from retained earnings. This would have, we would have time for this to. To approve the final uh. On our October eighth meeting and still have. Go to town council for. For a check and. Get it to advisor and post it for the fourteen day. Day law requirement, uh. Again, I I know this is a little chaotic and messy, but. Willing uh chaotic.
Mister Chair.
And I do appreciate the uh the patience and stuff we've had with it.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
On your article two, um, will the um selectmen be replaced with select boards? Will you be making those adjustments too? On the open space committee duties, you're first to selectmen.
Yes, I the it should be a.
Oh, struck. Okay.
Because that is one thing I did manage to catch.
Okay.
I I missed the two, but I I did catch that one.
Okay. I just checking.
I might have had a little help.
It involved something.
Mister Chair. If I might, um, I, again, I apologize for running out during the first part of Steve's presentation. Um, but the. The re.
Steve, would you come up and give the uh reasoning for the uh. The retained earnings thing, or if you can just.
Yeah, because that was my concern is like I I I thought we. Were kind of leaning towards that reimbursable account or the grant issue, so I was wondering what the retained earnings. Uh, purpose was.
It's a little complicated. Um, I'll try to get this right. Because the grant extends from September thirtieth to September thirtieth.
Okay, you're talking about the lapse.
Yeah.
When you get to the next.
Yeah, and we have to spend some money upfront. We really don't have enough to cover the personnel. And yet the difference is just about what we should have in retained earnings. That's why I'm asking for it.
Okay, I I I get that. I just didn't know if it was the same same thing and we just, you know.
It'll make life a little easier.
Okay.
It's just the transfer from retained earnings to personnel till the grant money.
Comes.
And I can get you that language as soon as possible, just so you know exactly figured out.
No, I get the purpose now. Thank you very much. Sorry for missing it earlier.
Oh, that's all right. And a and the dollar figure could be in uh, in actually on town meeting floor.
Okay.
It's I mean, if we an article toward, you know, we're talking with accountant, uh, county again. Getting the figure that, you know, they're looking for, whether it's ten grand.
Soon as we, as soon as we have the final BVA, which I believe Amber's working on.
Uh, yeah, she's uh.
We'll have that now.
She's working diligently because there was was just stuff that's uh. A little chaotic, they're sort of like us right now. Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay.
No, I'm I'm good. Thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome.
In that case, I'd be fine with second, you know, article eight has the TCTV retained earnings.
Close the citizens petition, add. Retained earnings article, TCTV. Uh, and fill in the dollar amount. For NRSD, uh. First of all, everybody's in favor of putting that article forward. And I did hear from uh Phillips and they were kind of waiting on to see if we. They got presented the same thing that we received, but they didn't commit to. But they don't have a special town meeting scheduled. So they were waiting to see it, as I've told, they were waiting because they generally don't. They just generally have one one town meeting here. Uh, they were waiting to see if that we, if we said no, or if we say yes, then because. It's a sixty percent reimbursement for them as well, so. Looking out for uh the taxpayers and, you know, down the road, it's only gonna. It's only gonna cost more. If if and if the roof goes, you know, home, then. Then you're gonna do it because it'll be an emergency.
Yeah. And that would be even more.
It's just. And it'll be, it'll, you know, that'd be out of that. So, uh, everybody find the uh, again, it's, it goes in front of town meeting and.
And it's gonna go to.
Yes or no, it's.
Election too.
Yes, we're done apart and uh special election is probably, that's where we. If it's gonna sink, that's probably where.
Yeah.
Although it's possibility that we will have the uh, the remote voting. So there is gonna be a demonstration, I'll, I'll cover that.
Damn.
The uh so, uh, is everybody all right with the uh, the draft town meeting adding, uh the retained earning article, filling in the dollar amount, and there perhaps could be additional citizens petitions? I, I I didn't hear of any, and, and generally, if they receive any, they usually send it over. But I'm not a hundred percent.
I'm, I'm in favor of the retained earnings, I don't have a problem adding that. I would say for any additional citizens input, if they weren't received by close of business today, we omit them, but anything that made the deadline today, we need to consider.
But I just, I just don't know.
It's not the citizens' fault that the clerk was out today.
No, the assistant was there.
Yeah.
I emailed the town clerk and I just didn't hear back.
That's fine, and that happens.
But if, like you said, if they came in, in time, uh, then they would get added by law. Uh, if they, they didn't come in, or they don't have the signatures, then they don't make it. And again, we have we have some time, because we did back this up.
Yep.
Back in uh, planning in May. And time to have it on another meeting for final approval. It can get advisory and posted, and we'll have plenty of, uh, we'll still have one for the fourteen day mandate to, uh, to post it. And depending on how uh our thing goes in executive session, whether we have a town administrator, it will change. We'll help out. And being less chaotic and a little more Uh, the next item is the next two items are the dispatch local one fifty-five A union contract and the police local one fifty-five union contract. The board was briefed on these in executive session.
Well, just one thing, were we supposed to vote on the closing of the warrant? We didn't vote on the closing of the warrant?
Yes, second.
We did?
We had a motion and a second, we didn't vote.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I was like, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Cold.
I get tied up in the uh
It's okay.
Well, that's why you all are here to keep me
That's right.
Because I need all they'll tell you, I need all
Who motioned it and who seconded it?
Mr. May motioned, I seconded it with the additional language that any citizens petitions that made it by close of business today be included.
Yeah. We're back.
So
Call the vote.
On that, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wise guys. Gang up on me, okay. Bear, handle my light work.
Daddy handle the bear.
Okay. Now we can talk about thank you for that. Police local one fifty-five dispatch A and the one fifty-five union contract, as uh, I started to say, get ahead of myself. We were initially briefed on and approving the, the ITA to bill, negotiate with them, and came back and was briefed on, updated on what they announced and saying, and we did have a consensus about, yeah, that's good, okay, see if they can make that work and everything, but if they never came back to us for us to officially vote to agree with all of the terms. Somehow they it was put out that they were approved, and they went out to labor council, labor council approved them, but then there were some hand notes in there by the union members of uh errors, a lot of discrepancies, uh, paid this, that, and everything. So uh, before anyone else signs, um this had to be put in front of the board, so we can either vote to approve them and sign them, or vote not to. Uh, again, there is a lot of, just a lot of little errors and mistakes in there for for me to consider, uh, decide, and rest of the board. Mr. May?
Yeah, um as it sits, as it stands, um I don't feel too good about these. To say the least. You know a lot of changes, a lot of changes, and I think that uh we didn't have it, it doesn't look to me like there was two sides to this negotiation. Uh, it looks like there was one. And uh there's a lot of this that I wouldn't agree with. And uh I don't plan on signing it as it is. And I, I don't think I need to go through all the little detail, but there's uh you know handful of items that just are way out of line with um, what I think should have been reasonable. Um, and uh I think really, this would have been better going before our new TA uh, potentially for the negotiation or
It's, like I said, it's
Because it was just handled poorly to me. No.
Ms. Grace?
Um, yeah, I was just, um, I, I seen the notes file on it, so I thought it was the errors and stuff, and some of the, a lot of the stuff that we had talked about. Um, there wasn't much that we, when we sent it back, there was only a few items, and they were addressed in it. So I got confused, because it was the way it was left and how it was presented to us. But um, they had, uh, it has the sheet in it, it tells you, you know, like a spelling error or whatever, um, that when they went through it, so and, and the way it stated was that it was being signed on based on that amendment of those corrections, so that's the way, uh, uh, I had, this is my first ever um, contract and how it was done, so it had gone in our meeting and it was a few things, and it never came back to us. And I, I thought that they, that meant that it was, there was nothing else that was, once they met, we met, whatever, I didn't realize that it come back to us again, I missed that step, so. Oh. Well, I guess we'll learn.
I'm gonna echo similar concerns with my fellow board members, I recall some discussions, but I don't recall ever seeing a final version. And it's just a little concerning that this appeared ready for signature, but as I looked through it, it doesn't appear that it was ready for signature.
My concern was it, it, the, the final copy before it went, left the building to labor council was, it didn't come back to the board for us to give a yes or no to set it up. Because in my mind, when it goes to labor council, that's, we accept a town meeting warrant and we send it out to council for finally, you, we have seen the final product as it sits, we, we approve it, and it goes out, and the technical area, anything like that, you know, they, they change, uh but that's, that's, that's my concern, it was, it went out, but we never we, we never saw the final stuff before it went. And I don't know what to disconnect, how that happened, I just know it did, and being responsible to the residents and answer the union people, it's it's gotta be done, right?
Mr. Chair, if I might. Uh, uh, you know, you've all hit on points that, you know, were concerning me, and, you know, to be straight up and absolute about this, um, this is the first union contract in the municipality that I participated in. Um, my participation amounted to a meeting back, I think, ju- June eleventh, in which three individual sections of this were presented with some minor changes, that if we concurred, should move forward. And that was the last I heard of it, of it, until just before September, I think, uh, the end of August, um, maybe the twenty-eighth, when we were told that it's ready to be signed. And I hadn't even read it. Um, so
That's, that's my concern, the procedural thing was, we never we never saw the final product before it went anyplace. But it has to come, come to the board to, to decide, it's a decision whether we're going to approve them and sign them, or we'll pass. And worst thing can be the arbitration, or the last second thing could be, we could actually have a meeting and get that around, and, you know, and go over them in, uh, in executive session, sort of to hopefully, so, uh, again, the, the procedure will send, uh I know the easy, simple thing to do is to say, yeah, it was just nine, I don't really know what the correction go, but that's to me, that's sloppy and irresponsible. And this is, you know, those type of things gotta stop, has to change, and but again, uh, it's, it's not my call, uh, it's, it's not an individual board member call, it's, it's the board, so, uh
I'm, I'm just concerned, because the other side didn't realize what was going on, and in good faith, they negotiated, and I just, it just, to, it's just, it's heartbreaking what happened. It shouldn't have happened.
It should.
Yep.
So, um is, I would entertain a motion to approve the union contract between the town of Templeton and Templeton Dispatch Local one fifty-five A Massachusetts Coalition of Police AFL-CIO for July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-eight, as we've had it in the board, so I would entertain a motion if anyone wants to make one. I would entertain a motion to approve the police local one fifty-five union contract between the town of Templeton and Templeton Police Local one fifty-five Massachusetts Coalition of Police AFL-CIO for July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-eight, as presented in for the board to sign.
Second. There was no motion. You made the motion.
Yeah, he said motion.
Oh, I said entertain.
Did you say entertain?
Let's go to Shannon, that motion.
My my hearing, my brain, something, but I thought I heard you say you had entertained a motion, and then Tim seconded. So you didn't, there wasn't a motion actually made. You entertained, there was no motion made. Right, after a moment of silence, you entered a motion, I seconded said motion.
Okay, move out, we're going through.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can burst it.
Any discussion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
No.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Doe?
No.
I vote no. Most of the else. The other item under old business is a possible vote on the town administrator contract. I put that on here just in case we uh have to agree or anything, uh
Plan a word, we're gonna talk about dispatch union, or we compliment them together.
There was no motion made on one fifty-five A, nobody made a motion.
So we'll go into executive session before we do the number four, correct?
Yes. Because, uh, they can't put down a motion, vote the, we, we don't even know if we're gonna vote on
That's what I was wondering, yeah, it makes sense.
So, uh before we go into, uh, executive session, uh board member comments.
Yes. I would like to thank Mr. Bennett. Because since we've had no TA, he stepped up and done a lot of work. And it might not be as smooth as we'd like it, but it's getting done. And uh Jeff deserves a lot of that credit. And uh, I'd just like to make sure he understands that it's been seen, and it's been known, and it's appreciated. So, thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Ms. Grace?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that on Saturday, there's a fair, um, it's Touch a Truck, it's being sponsored, uh, put together um, with the DPW, uh, and, um the animal control office, um, at Gilman Way, it's noon to five, um, and it's a, a, they're gonna have food and crafts and all kinds of fun stuff, and kids can come out and touch a truck, but it's for all ages. Um, I also wanted to, um, uh, the other night, I was watching, um, um, a meeting, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I was watching an advisory meeting, and, um, there were some questions and concerns about, um, a particular item, and I do have the paperwork to show that those items were not, uh, credit cards, they're in line of co- credit with always shown hardware. So, I don't know how that goes. If you want that or not, Mr. Chair, but
Are you all set?
Yeah.
I'm gonna echo Mr. May's comments, you've done more than, uh, the fair share of the workload. Wait a few phone calls back and forth, wait a few, uh, getting things in order and back and forth to you, cross emails. The pleasure helping you find all of the missing sets of minutes. Yes, it certainly was.
I would just like to echo something I said, uh, a few weeks back. We had, uh, an interim town administrator, and the board voted to, uh get a job switching for town administrator and post the job, and then the board voted to create a town administrator screening committee. We had we had a total of nineteen applicants, one which drew we had a total of, uh, nineteen applicants, one withdrew, uh, before the screening committee met, so they dealt with, uh, eighteen resumes. Uh, and the screening committee was April Tova, Nicole Roberts, Jackie Cron, and I'm gonna mess his name up, but Matt P. Sezny and Mr. Phil Cummings, uh, this committee, they did an awesome job, uh, in understanding the importance and time-sensitive nature of their task at hand that they were given by this board. Uh, those people met three times in, in one week. Uh, to whittle down that list to give us two very experienced, knowledgeable people to choose from. Uh, they gave up their free time, uh, with their families, their business, their friends, et cetera. It's a very, most, I think it's the most valuable asset you have. Uh, so on behalf of the board, uh, again, I, I would thank that committee for their, their work and their diligence. I would also like to thank my fellow board members, uh, once we got those names, this board met in three times in one hoot, Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday. Uh, follow up on the committee's work and interview the candidates. Uh, again, this is giving up, uh, the most precious commodity that I think everyone has and had to screen down. Time you can spend with your family, time you could spend with friends, uh, your business, by yourself, uh. And I would also like to thank the board for the last few weeks, uh, with no staff in the office. Uh, it's been a little chaotic and a little, uh, a lot rough. Uh, hasn't been smooth. Uh, but I thank my fellow board members, uh, for your support and your effort and, uh, and your patience, and, uh, we are getting things done. Uh, we don't look pretty, they may not be smooth, but the most important stuff we have gotten done, uh. There are some glitches and glitches, uh, follow, but, uh, so I thank you all. And now, we can go back to work. I move to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section ten on A dash two to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The town administrator, where an open meeting would be detrimental effect on negotiations, and the CHSO declares, and I do, we will reconvene back in open session for a possible vote on the town administrator contract appointment and to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Thope?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, we will take five minutes while TCTV packs up its cadals.
All right, we are back in open session to consider item four under old business. Mr. Board ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve the town administrator contract and appoint Mr. James Ryan as the town administrator.
So moved.
Would you be willing to amend it to begin September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five through?
September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty eight.
Twenty twenty eight.
I would.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. May, Mr. Toth, would you amend your motion and second to include for the board to sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I accept the friendly amendment.
I'm still a little chaotic here. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes for yes at nine thirty seven.
Welcome, Mr. Ryan.
Congratulations.
And we now have a town administrator and now we can get to work. Very good. Being the last item that is on the agenda, I would entertain a motion. Unless anyone has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. So seconded.
On the motion to adjourn, any discussion? Try it to ten P M. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned at nine.